All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will go ahead and call the meeting of City Council to order. It's 7:00 PM and we'll observe our traditional moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge. Thank you very much. Chief Tasey, always happy to have you in our presence this evening. Would you do the honors of leading us in the pledge?
A pledge for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Senator Barnes, good evening. Glad to see that you're here with us. The floor is yours, sir. We'll begin with you for your under-recognized guests.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe this is my fourth visit to this fine room here. We've had three meetings with the Cable Board. I guess I should introduce myself. I'm Clark Barnes and I'm representing Optimum at this point. I work with Orion Strategies with our headquarters right here in the beautiful city of Buchanan. I will just simply start with this. We're glad to be here and I know that any of us that have had cable TV service in the past under the name Suddenlink have had some experiences. And I certainly would not deny that. But what has happened is Optimum has spent several million dollars in the state of West Virginia in upgrading the cable systems, the fiber systems, internet, and has made West Virginia a strong partner. Also, as I shared with the Cable Board, I think probably a month ago, is at one time there were a lot of complaints against SubLink. And as of that Cable Board meeting, I had looked on the website for Public Service Commission and for this year there was only one complaint and that was a right-of-way issue. And I think probably, Mayor, that maybe it's been shared with the survey that was taken and the survey didn't look very well. But there's a couple of things that we want to point out. Number one, there was a lot of people that voted that weren't living in the city of Buchanan. We have no idea the complaints that they were speaking of, whether they were from last year, two years ago, three years ago. The survey didn't identify that. So, you know, we just want to leave it that we're glad to be here. We want to continue serving the residents of Buchanan and Upsher County and we will continue to do the best we can and that's based on how we're doing better already. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Well, thank you, Clark, and for the Council's benefit. As he mentioned, the Cable Board has met several times. We did issue, excuse me, a survey link, excuse me, allergies. It was shared throughout our social media platform. It was shared on our website. It was available here at City Hall and... Let this go by.
He's coming through.
He's coming. All right. So, the survey link was, as I said, was put out in several different mediums. As Clark mentioned, about 50/50 were the inside-city respondents and outside-city respondents. And we need to also keep in mind that the Upsher County Commission has a separate franchise agreement with Suddenlink. This franchise agreement is only for the city of Buchanan corporate customers. So, the Upsher County Commission already renewed their franchise agreement. I believe it was last year, maybe about 15 months ago or so now. So, now it's our turn. I think it's also important to note that, you know, this is a very small area. Population-wise, it's not increasing. And so, the likelihood of having multiple carriers in this geographic area is not going to happen. Even communities that are much larger than ours, Clarksburg, Fairmont, even possibly Morgantown. I think Morgantown might only have two options for TV cable, but Clarksburg has one. I even think Charleston has one. So, we are not going to have multiple providers in this area for folks to choose from. It's just not practical. So, I would ask folks to keep that in mind as we work through this exercise. The second thing, back to the survey, is, you know, you're much more motivated to fill out a survey if you are not happy. People who are happy with service, they typically don't fill out. They don't take the time to fill something out. They're happy and they're just, it works and they're not going to take to the phones and to email and to Facebook and to a survey to let you know that they're happy. They're just going to be happy and they're going to stay in their own bubble. But if you are unhappy, you're far more motivated to fill something out. Now, we, the board, we looked at all the survey respondents and it looked like around 50% or so had some negative feedback, but there were some positive feedback in there too. So, but we determined that around, you know, less than 5% of the customer base is unhappy. And that's not too bad. I think we can all appreciate the leaps and bounds that Suddenlink, now Optimum, they've taken to improve their service in the area. We all can remember our phones rang off the hook as council members and here at City Hall about the negative feedback that we received from folks with cable service. You know, we're not receiving those now at all. But folks are seemingly much happier. If they have a problem, Optimum is out and about to fix it in a timely manner. So, thank you for your work on that. Makes our lives easier too when we're able to work on our water and sewer lines and upgrading parks and things that we have the ability to control because we can't control the cable company. So, with all that being said, I feel good about the renewal, about renewing the franchise with now Optimum. And I hope that we can continue a good partnership and I hope that Optimum can continue to make necessary improvements in our area to serve our customers. Does it, do any council members have any feedback?
Yeah, so I guess from what you're saying, 50% of the survey results weren't positive, but you further looked at them and...
We drilled down the, so if they were labeled as not positive, why? What was the problem? Was it a service issue? Was it a right-of-way issue? Was it a, you know, just a, it was a cost issue, signal issue? And so, it was a mixed bag. There were a lot of costs, but, you know, the cost of these services, they're going to increase.
Okay, so one of those negative ones would have been the one that I completed in the outset.
Oh, now we know.
I can remember back when this cable TV started in the early '70s. We got a little bill like for $2.50 and you got a few more channels and now it's evolved. I got, I supply cable and television service to one apartment and I got the bill yesterday, the other day, which they pre-bill the month ahead and it was for $193. And that's more than the electric bill and the water bill combined. And each time this, these companies get sold, you know, the things have changed, prices go up and I don't recognize any positive impact on the service provided to myself and my business. And it's just, it's not something that I support. I know that we're stuck in a rock and a hard place, that me voting no or not supporting this isn't going to change really anything. But I'm also not going to sit here and be complicit with something that I don't agree with and don't, as far as, here was the icing on the cake. I've had an email, Sebridge.net for 30-some years. And that was one of the names of the companies before Suddenlink and Optimum. It was Sebridge and then I guess it's been maybe 10 different names. And about two months ago, it just stopped working. The only people I could talk to were in a foreign country and we tried for six weeks to try to get this email that I've had for 30 years reactivated. I had to start over. So, not only now people think I might be dead because my email hasn't responded for two months and I have a Gmail account now and I guess some of the people that have contacted me nowhere. So, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're here and communicating with us, but I don't support this in any shape or form. And that's just my two cents.
Well, I will share this with you relative to cost. I did check with some of our neighbors. And Lewis County, Weston has Shentel, which is Shenandoah Telecommunication Company out of Wadesboro, Virginia. There, for the same basic, if you did basic cable and basic phone service in Buchanan with Optimum and you did basic cable and basic phone service in Weston, it's about, it's $335 a month for that service versus the $193 here. So, I mean, there are more expensive companies out there than Optimum.
I'm sure you could find them if you're looking for them to create an atmosphere of they were not doing too bad, but, you know, that...
Well, I guess, so what's your suggestion?
You don't need to try to convince me. What's my suggestion? Well, we can't do anything because they own the lines on the poles, right? No other company is going to come in and install lines on the poles because there's not enough customer base to do it.
Right.
So, there's really, we're stuck in a rock and a hard place. So, I don't have a suggestion of what to do, but I don't support this.
Okay.
So, that's, it's more of a symbolic position I have here. And the counsel on your concern is duly noted and I will pass it on. Thank you.
I have something to say too. I get a lot of complaints about not being able to make a local phone call and get ahold of the cable company. The majority of the time, you've got to get in your car and go over there. And like he says, yep, you don't get to talk to anybody local. So, that's a big complaint that I hear all the time. And the thing is with these bills getting higher and higher, you know, a lot of people's on a very limited income and it seems like they're getting raised every three, four, five, six months.
There is no call center in Buchanan, but we do have a West Virginia call center and that was established last year.
That's in Taze Valley, right?
In Taze Valley, that's correct.
Yeah, but it's a small town. People have to talk with somebody, you know, and, you know, not put on the background.
I can appreciate that.
How many customers do we have in Buchanan? How many are on the rolls?
Is it about 1,400? I think we've just...
Yeah, I'm pulling it out of my mind now because I don't have that statistic with me, but...
If I recall, it's about 1,400. And keep this in mind too. We own, the franchise, the franchises are tied to cable. They're not tied to cable. They're not tied to internet, they're not tied to phone service, they're tied to cable. And, what is the one service, well, two services that people have been getting rid of right and left? Cable and telephone. So, the law of numbers would suggest the fewer cable subscribers that we have, for the population that we have, that price is going to keep, continue to go up because it costs the company the same to deliver the service to the geographical area, whether you have three customers or 3,500 customers. So, the more people that drop Suddenlink, or sorry, Optimum cable service and go toward the streaming route, then the, the cost of that cable is going to continue to keep going up because they have to, they have to offset the cost, because airtime costs money. These, these channels, it, it's a very complex battery or formula, but airtime costs money. So, that's why, because the, the cable company has to pay for the air for these channels. And when these channels raise their premiums, the cable company has to raise their rates to offset the airtime that costs for USA and TBS and CNN and Fox News and ESPN and even our local NBC and ABC channels. So, you know, look, I, I don't, I, I hear what everybody's saying. I'm just, all I'm doing is just pointing out that, I mean, we, we, we did look into, you know, I, I looked into the past year to see if it was even possible to, to entertain a second company, if any other company would be, would be interested. And, the answer is no, because again, our population is small, it is not growing, it is aging. And, so, the future of telecommunications companies are all in, in, in streaming and in the internet side. It's not in cable.
If I could interject, I've got a little different story. Because of the business I do outside of my city responsibilities and with my city responsibilities, internet's really important to me. And, you know, since I moved back from Pennsylvania, I've lived on Buckhannon Street, I've had, started with Suddenlink and Optimum now. And as soon as I could upgrade to a higher upload, download, I did that. For some stupid reason, I have a big package on my television, even though I watch one or two channels, that's it. But, I want to have that opportunity in case I need it. So, my bill's about $163 a month. And, I've only had one issue and it was ironically, it was the day of the second TV, second or third TV and cable board meeting, I went back and my internet wasn't working. And I was like, what are the odds of this? But, I have worked in the communication business for a long, long time and equipment fails. No matter how much you want to ignore it, equipment fails. So, I went over to the, to the office, swapped out the modem, came back, rebooted it, boom, perfect, everything was going to go. So, and, and it were very hospitable. I mean, it were very, they greeted me, they, they took care of the problems, scanned it in, got it going. I've been on the road for 40 years, my equipment fails. You know, pieces of stuff, AV and all that just happened. I would suggest to folks that do have problems and connectivity problems, don't be hesitant to turn your old equipment in and get new equipment. I mean, it gets upgraded all the time and it gets reconfigured all the time. So, you know, I don't want to jinx myself, I hope I go back to the office tonight and everything's working.
I think, I think Randy...
I want to come with too, but...
I think Randy, you can, you can verify this. There's certainly a difference between fiber and the lines that are normally were run years ago with, with cable. Basically, as you're, as you're looking at a lot of cable lines, you're looking at copper lines, you have a center hub. And then, the farther out that signal goes, the weaker it tends to get. With fiber, it never gets weak. It continues to be just as strong on the other end as it is this end. So, as we continue to spend and invest in fiber and replacing old lines, then the service is actually going to get better. And, and also, councilman, let me comment on the competition aspect. We are in competition. We are in competition, we have a great incentive to try to improve the cable service because the competition...
Is streaming.
Is streaming.
Yeah.
So, so there, there is continual competition out there. But, we are, we are spending money, we're trying to improve things, and certainly, yes, we, we know that we're not taking care of all the situations and all the challenges that are out there. But, we're making a good faith effort.
We had some issues when we moved into our new home. And I think this was after the judgment against Suddenlink from the Public Service Commission. And, we would have technicians coming into our home from Long Island, New York, Parkersburg, Charleston, West Virginia. So, you know, Optimum did make a tremendous effort. I do know that, I mentioned DirecTV, I know in Barbara County, just next door, those that had DirecTV, I don't know if they have Channel 12 back yet or not, which is a local station because, was it Nextfer?
Yes.
Could not come to a financial agreement with DirecTV. And, I mean, my friends in Barbara County, they were going nuts. You know, they did not have access to that local channel. So, it is competitive for the companies to, you know, buy the rights to programming and vice versa, you know, however, however it works. But, I, I can attest, Optimum had made a tremendous, I was impressed with the guys from Long Island, that just, that they would bring them down. That wasn't cheap, I know, because they put them up too instead of... And, then, my service has improved and I can't complain. I know that, there seems to be one telephone pole out on Morton Avenue that has a target on it. You know, they'll take out the system. But, it seems to be repaired sometimes in just a matter of a couple hours if, if you have an accident or something, so...
I, I will say that I have DirecTV at my place out of Frenchton because I don't have an option. And, one of the most frustrating things is when it goes out and a thunderstorm comes in the middle of a WVU football...
Yeah.
There you go. It never happens, it never happens with Optimum.
Two things, Clark. One, to Pam's point, what is over here now? We do have an office, correct? There are people, there are people there that people can, if they do want to talk to somebody local, they can, they may not be able to call them up on the phone, but they can go over there on Fifth, on North Fifth Street and talk to them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we do still have that office here in Buckhannon. Secondly, what is the resolution that has come about the investment on the fiber for Channel 3? Do we know where that stands?
Yes, there was a, in your package, you're going to see a letter there, $5,000 credit will be given if the franchise agreement is passed.
Okay.
And it'll go towards the implementation buildup to that head-in.
Okay. So, wanted to make sure that we clarify based on last time that this is not going to be, a city investment is not going to be required. Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to, none of my criticism of the former Suddenlink enterprise is directed at Clark or Curtis Wilkerson, who's one of my best pals, or anybody else with Orion. But, during the time that I was mayor and long before that, when I was the town attorney for 33 years, but certainly, one of the biggest things that dominated our activities at City Hall was complaints about cable. And, one of the, the saving graces was, back in the day, there was a guy by the name of Rick Zikafus, who was the district manager for Triax Communications, predecessor in interest to Sebridge and Suddenlink. You just pick up the phone and call the guy and say, hey, Mrs. Jones down on Oak Street or wherever she lived, has a problem, can you check, I'll get right on it. And then, after Rick Zikafus, it was Willie Critfield. And after Willie Critfield, it was Peter Brown. And we had that kind of a relationship with people locally, as Pam mentioned and as others have chimed in about, that we could go to and, and those kinds of problems would be pretty readily, pretty quickly resolved. Altice, one of the biggest telecommunications providers in Europe, right, owned Suddenlink and they also own Optimum. Just for clarification, Clark, things were so bad with Suddenlink that the enterprise had to be rebranded, renamed. It's still owned by Altice, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, so...
The $2,400, the $2,400,000 fund that the PSC gave them was a wake-up call.
Sure, sure. That's, that's the point I want to make, is that CJ mentioned that when a company gets sold, that new things start to happen. We're still dealing with the same government. Altice is still the owner of this enterprise that the bottom line is providing cable, phone and internet to Upsher County. And, and I don't, I don't know that it's, Optimum's been around now for about a year? Is that, are we talking about a year? Is that...
That's right.
About the case? So, I don't know if that's enough of a sampling to be able, for us to be able to nod our heads, the quaker nod of the head that, oh yes, you're, you're right, things are light-years better than what they were a year ago. I've had, I've continued to have occasional issues at my house. I was without internet for two days, talked to a woman in Texas, talked to several folks in Texas actually, over the course of that two days. Couldn't send email, couldn't access ESPN scores, nothing, you know? And, and all of a sudden, it comes back on the third day, it wasn't me, and I had, I had already booked a service call to have somebody come. When I called on a Monday, they said, well, we won't be able to send a technician out until Friday a week. It was, it was going to take the better part of two weeks to get someone there to look at my problem, after I was on the phone for two days, going through, trying to do, pull this button, pull this plug, reset this, now I'll wait. I mean, they were patient with me down in Texas when we were doing this exercise, but, I don't know, is it, one of the things we always looked toward when we renegotiated franchise agreement was maintenance of that local office, so that we could have someone to turn to. Is that, is that like something that, that ship has sailed? It's a dinosaur, you're not going to have any local connection like a Willie Critfield or a Rick Zikafus or a Peter Brown ever again?
I can't be Mr. Zikafus, but I can leave you a card, and if you can't get things resolved through the normal channels, which I hope you can, then certainly do not hesitate to call and we will expedite it.
My, my guess is for us to return to those days, that $190 bill would be $350. I mean, I think it could happen, but people may have to make a good living. So, if you put that extra layer in, in every local office, everywhere you go, you just got to, you got to pass the crosswalk.
Another thing I have to say, I, this, this is a personal thing. I went for days to get my sister, my sister, I'm taking care of things for her, to get on Optimum, and I was told, four days straight, we're coming today to hook her up, come today to hook her up. Well, I'm going before work, I'm going after work, she's not well enough to do it. So, about the fifth day, I'd had it. And, there's one nice guy over there and there's one that's not very nice, but I, I was, I was good with the nice guy. But, you know, I basically had to blow my talk a little bit and I didn't want to be that.
And this was recently?
Uh, two minutes ago. And, they said, we'll guarantee you, we'll be there tomorrow between 2:00 and 5:00 and I'll be daggone. They were there because they knew I was going to be back, because I was that, I was there five days straight. But, don't tell, don't tell customers they're going to do it today and, and you're still waiting two, three, four, five days down the road. I mean, there's a lot of older people that's dealing with this, you know, that can't come and go or, you know, do that, so, but just be honest to your people.
That's a good note. I would agree on that.
Anything else? If it's okay with everybody, while Senator Barnes is here, I'd like to go ahead and advance the items under F1 to offer up for passage. It is an ordinance and it's in your packet under Ordinance 464, which is the franchise renewal for Sequel III Communications II LLC DBA Optimum for the construction and operation of a cable system, and it would be under first reading. Ordinance by caption is an ordinance of the city of Buckhannon, West Virginia, renewing a franchise granted to Sequel III Communications II, those are Roman numerals, 3 and 2, LLC for the construction and operation of a cable system. We've had, we've had a decent amount of discussion at this time. I would entertain a motion...
Move that.
I was going to do them by, by, if that's okay.
Sure. I will say, this is for a 10-year term also.
It is a 10-year term, yes. I would entertain a motion that we pass on first reading, Ordinance 464. Is there a motion to that effect?
So, move second?
There's a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Rigor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. So, let the minutes reflect that council members Buckloo, Rigor...
No, Buckloo. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Buckloo, Rigor, Sanders. Thomas, did you vote?
Yes.
All support the motion and council members, Sir Rylands and McCauley do not support the motion.
Are you voting?
Sure. Put me down as yes.
Okay.
Okay. That's first reading. The second line item point underneath F1 is to include the city of Buckhannon support of Channel 3 construction credit for the head-end connection to broadcast. And as Ambie just pointed out, that upon the, the positive renewal of the franchise, they would credit us back to assist in the fiber connection to the VFW or American Legion property on South Canal Street for their new location.
It's a, it's a grant, isn't it? $5,000 or grant?
They're calling it a grant.
Yeah, so it will be a reimbursement to us, but the...
No, I think they're going to...
They're going to pay for it? Okay. So, 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 so again, the city, at the end of the day, the city of Buckhannon is not out the $5,000 and some odd dollars change that is quoted to lay the fiber line to the location at 16 South Canal Street. Is there, is there a motion to that effect to accept Channel 3's support by the city and to agree to the term of a $5,000 grant?
Shall move.
There's a motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rigor, is there any discussion?
Do we know what the rental amount is per month? Has there been any tweaking that this was entered into seven years ago and we're looking...
Already talking about the real estate part?
Yes.
That's later on, that's a whole separate thing.
Oh, I, I thought this was the lease agreement, I apologize.
No, this is the...
This is Channel 3.
Okay.
Allow Channel 3 to help...
I, I got you. I thought we were tying that in with the lease agreement. I apologize.
No, there's, there's, there's three, there's, there's, there's two and a half, I guess, line items on the, that are relative to the, to the cable this evening.
I got you, okay.
Okay, any further discussion relative to the, the second point here under F1 to include Channel 3? Hearing none, I will call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. The ayes have it with one abstention, me naming Mr. Rylands. Okay. While we're on the subject of TV cable, to Mr. McCauley's point, let's go to F4, and this is the lease agreement between the city of Buckhannon and Sequel III Communications II LLC DBA Optimum for the equipment on the North Buckhannon Water Tank Hill.
I can talk a little bit about it, certainly not an attorney, but I, I've been in communication with, her name was Sard, was it Sardlek? She's a senior director of the real estate for Sequel Altice. And, basically what we did, the agreement from this seven-year term is the same agreement with different dates and a different name signing it. I did change it to $15,000 a year. We, there was a graduated rate and I just thought, well, I'll put $15,000 in there and see what happens. And they, they... see what happens, and they, they, they were okay with that per year. It expired at $14,000 for, I believe.
So, so this is a per year? Okay.
No, they give us a check each month.
Okay.
Yes, it's $15,000.
Okay.
So that, over the 10-year life of the 10-year franchise?
No, this is a seven-year. I went with the same, this is separate, this is separate from the franchise, so they made that clear, they didn't, that's not part of the franchise.
This is all the satellites and towers up on the Water Tank Hill?
At the water tank, that, yes, the real estate that they're using there for their equipment is what this rental is for.
Right, so they're paying us $15,000 a year?
Yes.
To, okay.
And actually, it's the water department, we, we give that to the water department because it's their water tank and.
So that's $105,000 in revenue that our water department relies from renting.
Correct.
A portion of Water Tank Hill.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a question. I don't know how to begin. There he is up there, but are they allowed to add, keep adding more equipment? Keep on adding?
There's a survey, it's, it's meets and bounds description.
It's a tiny piece of property, and we have, we have things there on it, but they have a tower, they have, we have some things on their tack.
Yeah.
We had a survey done, I think seven years ago.
There's a survey attached to the document that's on hold.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Ambie. Is there a motion to, excuse me, to the effect that we would accept that $15,000 a year lease agreement for the total of seven years from the cable company, Optimum, to our City of Buckhannon Water Department on Water Tank Hill?
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed?
I'm going to abstain until we see what happens on second reading with the franchise agreement.
Okay.
But for now, I'm going to abstain.
Well, this won't come back up again.
Oh, this is a singular.
Yeah, but I'll hold you down as abstaining.
They'll, they'll not honor it if the franchise agreement doesn't.
Yeah.
But this does that in there.
Should the motion, would you, would you all feel better if the motion included the language, subject to the passage of the franchise agreement?
I like that better in my mind, Robbie.
Would those who made the motion be okay with adding that, that language?
Yes.
Okay. Does that change your abstention, or are you still abstaining?
I'll approve it.
Based on that?
Change, yes.
Okay, all right, so that, that motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Senator Barnes, I think, I think we're finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One request.
Yes, sir.
On the Channel 3, before reconstruction begins on, on that building, have, let our people take a look at it.
Okay.
Do some engineering to make sure that everything is gonna work together.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Mel Debbie, hello.
I'm with you.
All right. Okay, Clark was the only one that was listed on the agenda at the time of printing as a recognized guest. Mitch, you did not indicate a yes or no, and would you like to address the council about anything this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
How are you focused this evening? Good, sir, however you choose. Hi. I hate that I have to do this, be here to do this, but in March of 2022, the last snowstorm we had in 2022 last year, there was a young man, a new employee, operating one of your snowplows, and he got off course and ended up hung up in my front yard. I hear, I'm in the house, I hear somebody spin, and I think it was, I thought it was a male lady, and then I hear a beagle, and I go out, and this boy's hung up in my yard, and another guy out there on the pickup with him. And they're big, I'm gonna tell them they were hung up, I just heard of. So they came up, and we got things worked out, they pulled their snowplow out of the middle of my yard, it was buried, cleared to the axles on both ends, made an awful, awful muddle. He started in the yard once, couldn't make it backed up, and tried again, and really hung up that time. So they came up with a backhoe, and boy, you know, I took my tractor and plowed the snow off. When they left, they left a bunch of mud all over the road, so I had to get somebody to come and wash the road off for me. I did call the, I called, talked to Jerry, and he sent some guys up there to work on. They came up, put a little bit of straw down, and they didn't fill in any of the ruts, and just, so I called him, he came up, looked at it, he said, that's not acceptable, we'll do something else, and I said, okay. So a few days later, they came up, they got a load of dirt, I think from Highland Landscaping, brought the dirt up and put it down, and ran, it was really muddy, and they came in there with a, and rolled up with a yard mower, and I finally told my city guy we're gonna have a yard mower hung up, and again, my grass didn't grow. So again, I make phone calls, so the company comes up last, last summer, about June or July, something like that, to try to repair my yard. The grass didn't grow. So again, I get on the phone, start calling the city, start calling, I get told, well, yeah, they're coming, I call Highland Nursery, they've not heard anything back. This has been going on back and forth. My yard got tore up by a city snowplow. I have been patient, and you know, guys that know me know I'm not a patient person. It's been a year and a half. A year and a half, my yard been tore up, not fixed. I came up two, three weeks ago, talked to Teresa, I don't know that I filed a complaint, but I did tell her what my issue was, and I did, I had talked to Jerry and Brad two or three times, and they say, well, we're calling somebody. Well, I never hear back from anybody, that, they got the message, they're coming or not coming. So I come up to City Hall, and whatever you wanna call it, I talked to Teresa, and she took my information, and I did get an email from Jerry, he said, I got your complaint from City Hall, the company's coming up to do your yard. That's been almost a month ago. I called the company, it was supposed to do the yard, they know nothing, they won't, so they didn't know when they could get there, they didn't know. So what I'm, what I'm here tonight to do, I would like for you people to give me an answer by Friday of next week, what we're gonna do to fix my yard. I'm not, I'm not gonna pay out of my pocket. I had put money in it, straightened up, paying people to wash my driveway off, they cracked my driveway with the roller, I had to get my black, my driveway blacked off, that was $4,000. I've not said anything about that, but I am out of patience. It's been a year and a half, all I've got is crickets. So this is the last avenue I've come before I'm forced to take other action. I don't want to do that, but I'm here to tell you, Mr. Mayor, to you, I want something by next Friday with a plan of who and what and when is gonna come and fix my yard. If that company that did it doesn't care about coming back fixing the work, and I'll remind you, you've already paid them once to fix it, if they're not gonna come back and fix it, then you get on the horn and find somebody else that can. Next Friday is the deadline, or I'm gonna take other action.
All right, Mitch, thank you. We've heard, we've heard it, thank you.
Can I clarify a problem?
Yeah. Look, Robbie, I don't appreciate your condolences, every time you see me, you're a smart-ass punk.
But, well, no, I.
I shouldn't even have to be down here, I've tried to call and talk to you, I've left a message for you, you won't call me because you don't like.
I, I.
Well, let's just, go ahead, Randy, next Friday is the deadline, okay?
Can I clarify two things?
Yes.
March 2022 is when the incident took place?
Yes.
And the company you're speaking of that has been attempting to fix it was Highland Nursery?
They were there one time. The city's been there, the city's been there twice, and Highland Nursery was there once.
So that's the only company, one, one time, Highland Nursery?
Yes.
Mitch, hold on a second.
It's just been 18, it's been 18 months. I don't, I don't mean to have, I don't want it to be like this, it's been 18 months.
Mitch, hold on a second. You're, I, I've never received a message from here to, to give you a call about this.
I've, I've called you two, three times on your cell phone, and then I guess you blocked me or something.
No, sir, I don't have any phone calls from you on my cell phone about this issue.
That was last year, well, you would've, but anyway.
We, I can, my point is, is that we heard your complaint, we will take care of it, okay?
You haven't in 18 months.
Well, this is the first that you've been here to talk to us about this, this is the first we, has anybody heard about this before? Okay, so, so appreciate you coming.
Would you kindly, my point, another point, I'm only, I didn't, I didn't want to be arguing, my point is, hey, Tim, why do I even have to be here? That should be, that should probably.
I don't know, I don't know, but.
I'll look forward to hearing from you by next Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay.
All right, I think that's it for the public opinion, right?
And, and has anybody heard about this?
No.
No, okay, I just want to make sure. Well, you have, but.
What's your story, Jerry?
We, we were up there, as he said, twice.
Yeah, I guess I'm up anyway.
We were up there twice, we rolled it, when the, when the boy got hung up, they were not very nice to our employees to start with, and it was an honest mistake, he was a new guy, does no longer works for the city, but he, he didn't even know the, he was off the plower route, and if you've ever been up there, you, your assumption would be that there's a driveway that goes straight to the garage, and there was a lot of snow on it, I would've made the same mistake more than likely if I didn't know the area, but anyhow, it happened. He said, we will make it right, we'll fix it. We went up there, we did, the first time, like he said, we put some dirt in the ruts, put some straw down, the grass didn't, but we reseeded it, the grass didn't grow to satisfaction, so we went back, we purchased a load of dirt from Highland Nursery, we went up there, we refilled the lot, the grass, and we rolled the entire section of lawn, even where we weren't, well, didn't make tracks. The grass was growing, and then he said, there's bald spots in it. So I said, okay, we will have a professional come up and have them reseeded and aerated, to which they did, and it still wasn't satisfactory, and I think, and again, you're welcome to call Bobby Gompers, that's who I was dealing with, was Bobby directly. I, after the complaint in here, City Hall, like I said, it came back in here, and the whole time, he's, he's calling me and saying, Highland won't answer my calls. Every time he did, I made contact with Bobby, and he said, yeah, we'll go back up there and do it. And I said, well, if you don't want to, let me know, we'll send another company, we'll get another company to go do it and try to get this resolved. Anyhow, Bobby goes, or told me that he would make an attempt to go back up and fix that yard, that was, like I said, the last time he was in here and made a complaint, which was when we were working on Friendly Way down there, because Mitch was in the public safety complex, then he left here and come down there. So that's where it's been.
Is that the whole Chamberlain property?
Who, what?
Is that the Chamberlain property?
I'm not.
On Mark Avenue?
I'm not sure, David's clerk.
It's not Mark Avenue. I don't think it's even on the city level.
No, it's not, and like I said, the plow operator, he, he was off, completely off route, and again, but again, he was a young guy, new to his thing, it's an accident, it happens, and we, but we have made several attempts to make it right.
But it was city equipment?
Yes, it was, it was a city snowplow, and we had to, Mitch is exactly right, we had to pull it out.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Consolidated meets next Thursday. This is a streets department's matter, really, it really ought to be consolidated technically. So why not put it on your agenda for Thursday? Instead of wait till Friday, you can give Mitch an answer on Thursday. I would think that the Consolidated Public Works Board would say, yeah, let's, let's get this fixed.
I think someone goes up there and seeds it, then someone's gonna need to water it, you know, you can't just, this time of year.
Well, I think it's, it's being, yeah, frequently afterwards, so, you know, grass takes time to establish, but again, they're not the best, it's not the best soil conditions, he's right, it's, it's at the bottom of the slope, there's a lot of, a lot of water, it's kind of swampy in areas, so, again, I'm not a, I'm not a landscape architect, that's why, that's why we called a professional, and we couldn't, we couldn't do it satisfactory, so we called in a professional, and that's where we're at.
Since, since we've gone to your comments, I feel compelled to ask, do you feel that this complaint has been adequately addressed by the city?
Absolutely. I, I believe that we went above and beyond, is my, is my comment, and again, I don't wanna get in the weeds, don't wanna.
Oh, we're there.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna get, well, in the weeds, no pun intended, but I didn't wanna, I didn't want to get into a confrontation, but like I said, it's, it's, even with, if you called Bobby Gompers, even with Bobby, it hasn't been real pleasant when he's been there.
What about Mitch and Bobby?
Well, they, they, yeah, there's been some, like I said, they've not been pleasant with.
But that's not getting into.
No, that's why, I don't wanna get into that, but I think that's a lot of plays into what's going on.
Well, I agree with Councilman McCauley's suggestion, I think that we should put this on the Consolidated Public Works Board for next week, have a discussion about it, we can even invite Mitch back if he wants to bring his pictures, if he wants to show what, what, what his, what his concerns are, we'd be happy to, to entertain that, but I'm not gonna tolerate that kind of behavior in this council chambers. You don't come in here and call anybody names, you don't come in here asking for something and then, and then use language like that, I, I, it doesn't matter who, who that's directed at in here, that's not appropriate, so I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad that that, that's over, but we're happy to help. I, you know, again, this is the first, this table is hearing about it, but we will be happy to, to consider it at the appropriate time, so.
We don't, we don't want anybody to feel that we damaged their property and not adequately addressed, and so.
Right.
Again, and like I said, myself and Brad Hawkins both have been.
All right, sir, well, while you're, you're.
They documented that you've done this stuff?
Yes, yes, and we had pictures of when it happened and all that stuff, and like I said, I thought it had been addressed, honestly, I thought it had been taken care of, I didn't even know, you know, I just thought Mitch was here because he missed council.
No, it's an appearance.
No, no, sure.
Do you have a report this evening?
Just a short one, I, I just, again, our internet's been out, so it's been made for call attention. Been being back and.
Clark, we're.
No, we can't blame them for that.
It's links, right? Links?
It's on our intranet, it's on our, that's, that's what part of our upgrades next year is for in the budget. We've completed the Madison Street light, lighting and electrical distribution, be working on the remainder of the curb in the next couple of weeks. Gateway West sidewalk portion is complete except for the Refuge Island and street lighting installation. We work, of course, all day today on barbecue bash setup, and we hope to finish up Scott Street intersection the next week or so. Sewer crews begun work on the sewer line replacement on upper end of Myrna Street. The water crews are working on repairing a couple fire hydrants, still, they're still over in North Buckhannon working. We've selected an applicant for the driver's position and are awaiting drug testing, background check results, and waste collection. Under Jay's engineering report, Stockard Youth and Community Center Multi-Use Facility Project, a tour of similar facilities in Morgantown area took place on June 13th, and Mills Group continues to work on the detailed design of a multi-use facility, and we will be submitting UCA, or USDA Community Facility Grant application later than Friday. The Mills Group is going to submit the design drawings to an outside construction estimator within the next month to get more accurate realistic estimate of what the proposed facility may cost. Under the FEMA Community Visit, the Community Visit was held on June 8th for the CRS review and reaccreditation. Jay now has 30 days to submit the required documentation for the final review and rating of the city. West Virginia DOH Transportation Alternative Program Grants, Jay's working on a couple path grants, wants to finish up the Poundstone portion of the Waltrail, we had to phase that in two phases, we, we wanted to just do the one phase, but we weren't able to. So that's to finish it up to Moore Avenue, and then the second one that he's working on is the Morton Avenue Sidewalk and the North Locust Street Sidewalk Project that we've talked about. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Tennis?
Would you like to work?
Oh, no, thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any questions for, for Jerry? Almost called you Reverend Harrow. Jerry?
It's time to pass the plate.
Yes. Communion time.
They called a lot of things.
Come back home, can you send me that report?
I should.
Thank you, sir. Ambie Jenkins is up next for our finance report, that is on the back of the agenda.
Hopefully, my report's less controversial than my predecessor's.
Okay, so I'm going to give you the balances for the enterprise funds on May 31st. Waste Collection Board Money Marketing Checking, $1,175,000. And then we have the CD and savings at $258,000. We are, I think I've reported this before, any CDs that renew, we're trying to convert them to the CDs that have our rates. I mean, they're changing from .01 or .1 to 4% in most cases. Water Board Money Marketing Checking, $94,300. Working Capital and Savings, $874,000. Sanitary Board Money Marketing Checking, $1,061,000. Working Capital and Savings, $459,000. And Stormwater Funds at $213,000. I needed to report the workers' compensation. We renew every July. The quote came in for that. The quote is for the total of all the departments, including the enterprise funds. The expiring premium is $99,809, and the renewal's at $1,05469. So Jamie sent me an email on the reasons for that. Actually, the Emod is not bad. It is increasing from .75 last year to .80 this year. That would cause an automatic 5% increase. But it was the payroll, we have to estimate payroll for the following year, and we've given pay increases. So a lot of that was that payroll exposure. In your packet, you'll see the Emod ratings changed. And for the most part, Incova cut the rate in 11 of those 13 categories. So we're still doing really well with Incova as far as claims. They appreciate what we do with light duty, and that reflects in those Emod changes. On, okay, I'm going to give you a report. Housing Enforcement, that's later in your packet. We accept, advertised to accept bids for the two demolition properties. And those came back, and council will approve low bid tonight, so we can proceed with that. Hopefully, once the contract's signed, within 60 days, those two properties will be cleaned up.
That was the only one bidder on it, right?
No, we had four.
Four, okay.
Yep. Stalker Use Center, the USDA grant application that Jay and I have been working on. Mr. Galloway contacted me. We went over a draft feasibility, financial feasibility study. And that final product should be to me next week. We have submitted the application to USDA without that, but then I will just submit that to her as soon as I get it, because they're going to take a while to review it anyway. For the Colonial Arts Center report, R26201 is hosting the Lyre's Contest this Friday, the 16th, at 7 o'clock, with the special guests of James Romel and Bill Lep. St. Joseph's Hospital contributed $10,000 of their $50,000 donation commitment. We got that last week. And then BCT contributed $2,000 towards their ongoing commitment after their successful presentation of the Red Velvet Cake Ward. The balcony seating install was delayed again until June 27th. There was a delay with fabric delivery. That has been received, so we don't anticipate another delay. The carpet has been fully installed at the balcony. The contractor's finishing up the details inside, on the inside, and the things that they were tasked to do. The floor and the basements are finished, the kitchen's finished. One restroom's finished, and they need to work on another restroom. They have the items there, and I suspect that'll be finished this week or next. Manager Ann Wilson has been updating the website very often. And the website's colonialartscenter.org, in case someone wanted to know that. And then we are also working on ticketing software for events. We, there were several, we have paid several bills this week. In fact, we just finished up paying bills today. So I'm just going to point, there's so many, I'm just going to try to point out the really prominent ones. So if the Testa Associates Engineering and Detail Design for Stalker View Center, $104,000 was expensed. We've spent $15,000 to New Daniel Fence Company to install gate and fence at the evidence storage area. $11,000 Scott Electric for wire at the Madison Street project. $38,000 to J.F. Allen for base asphalt at Madison Street. $24,000 to Tradeworks for the labor on the Florida Street sidewalks. $29,000 for the labor at the theater to Tradeworks. Stout for the kitchen exhaust to it, I'm certain that that was for Stalker View Center. And $12,000 lows for the public safety training, building, training area. The building materials they're using to make the training area. And, oh, $16,000 Tradeworks for the labor at the Public Safety facade.
Randy, that $105,000 to the test then?
Yes.
What's that bring to the total, too, for the Stalker architectural work?
I think that whole thing was $300,000, if I remember right.
So we just add another 100?
No, no, that's part of that project, yeah, that's part of that contract.
Thank you.
Yeah, we wouldn't pay the whole thing at once. And then just to remind everyone, our 4th of July event will be on June the 30th in conjunction with Create the Pannon's activities.
Ambie, balcony seating, is that the same company that's been doing the downstairs seating?
Yes, they're both the same.
Is this going to be any indication of getting...
I've asked that because they had that trouble. They, I think they had strong conversations because they're a large company. And they have many projects out there. So I took it they had some strong language to the fabric supplier, and they did get the fabric in for the balcony seats, I know that. He, the person, the salesman I've been working with, of course, he believes that there won't be an issue with the delay of the telescopic seat. But that's not happening until September. Well, yeah, I thought the same thing. I asked the question, he's been trying to follow up on that, keep me in the loop. He's real good at letting me know when something's happening. So hopefully, no, we, he feels that it's going to be ready.
All right, thank you, Ambie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ambie.
Do you want to, you want to do budget revision now, or you want to do it later? It's, I don't care, it's up to you.
It's up to you.
What you all want to do. We'll do it now? Okay. While we're on the, while we're on the discussion of money, we'll just...
Yep.
Hey, guess what? This is the last one. Because this is the last meeting before the 30th. So you know she might.
There's also the red demolition bid acceptance, too, if you want to take that up as well. You want to do that one first, it's short. F2.
Yeah, you're just putting off that budget revision.
It's a big one. I gotta...
F2 for the, opening the demolition bid results for 6 Amber Rose Street and 11 Nona Street.
Yes, so four contractors came in and presented bids. I'll give you the four that came in and their bids. Smokey, Joe Enterprises, Daily, West Virginia. And this is two houses, two structure, and the properties will need to be completely cleared of any sheds and utilities. So it's going to be a vacant lot when they're finished. $23,520. Methany Contracting, Elkins, West Virginia, $29,500. Enviro Clean, West Milford, $37,105. And Mainline, LLC of Buchanan, $48,500. So the low bid was $23,520.
That's Smokey Joe.
What'd you think it was going to, what were you estimating?
I thought it would be...
About 20?
No, no, no. We have, those are two properties. One's got a basement on it. I thought it would be 30 or 40.
So Smokey Joe is in, huh?
I asked Smokey Joe if he thought he could do it. That's cheaper than what we can... I think he has access to landfill, to be quite honest with you. I think he has access to landfill, which helps in this price.
I would move, we accept the low bid.
All right, there's a motion by McCollough, is it Thomas, was that you?
CJ.
CJ. Okay. A motion to accept the low bid for the demolition. Is there any discussion? Hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed?
It was robust.
Yeah, it was. I thought the same thing. Motion carries. All right, Ambie, you're now down into a corner here. We got to do the budget revision.
Lock and load.
All right, so in your packet, you see two pages of several line items.
With middle, end, beginning?
Almost the end, looks like this.
Is this the seventh revision?
Yeah, seventh revision.
I declared us done at like 3, so.
Well, I tell you. In this budget revision, I have not touched anything in revenues. Your budget has not changed whatsoever. What I've done is go through every line item of expenses and basically shift those expenses around to compensate for the changes in expenditures. And this year, I, this was one of the toughest years as far as trying to get all the invoices. And we literally paid bills here at 4 o'clock, and I still had to fix some budget revisions. So we've let all the supervisors know, you know, stop spending for now. We've given them warning of that long time ago, but some of them were still turning in invoices. And it was a, it was a struggle for us out there. But anyway, I'll go through it. You'll see that I make notes on the items. I'm going to try to just point out the ones that make... If you have any questions about any of them, and I sent these to you last night. So if you have any questions about any of them, let me know. Mayor's Office Salary, I could reduce that by 3,000. Mayor's Travel, I put 500 in there because municipal league travel, I want to get something in there for that. Hosting increased by 2,500. Mayor's Office Legal Publications increased by 500. Professional Services, 6,800. We have that financial feasibility study, and I hadn't put anything in there for it. It's going, it will not be any more than 9,000, so I've got enough to pay that if I had 6,800 to it. Mayor's Office Supplies, 1,000. Event Expenses, the added contribution to the Strawberry Festival, added 5,000 for that. Treasurer's Group Insurance, I could reduce that by 500. Engineering Training, up 100, but then I took insurance and bonds and reduced that by 100. Zoning Health Insurance, I reduced 300. Zoning Training, I could reduce 500. Zoning Insurance, 300. City Hall Janitor Insurance, I've reduced 500. I took it, I've taken all of City Council's contingency that was left, $39,283. Salaries for the Police Department, they had some money left in there, so I took 50,000 of that. He still has some in there. Police Training, deducted 10,000 for that. Police Department Insurance, I had to increase it. We have a lawsuit ongoing, we've had to pay some deductibles, and then there was an increase in some insurance. I can't remember the reason for that, I didn't put it in there. But the deductible for the lawsuit had to be paid. Police Materials and Supplies, they needed another $1,000. Police New Equipment, I added $25,500. That was because they had fencing for the evidence area, software for the task force. They had an email, the email subscription service. And then we had the issue where cruisers, because of, again, backlog of materials, trying to get them in. We, our people were still driving old cruisers, and we had new cruisers sitting there waiting to be in service. They hadn't finished them because we hadn't got some of the equipment in. So we were paying for the old cruisers where normally we would have got them out of there and got them sold. So that kind of increased that line item as well. Fire Department Salaries, reduced it by 25,500. But I had to increase the phones by 500, the fire training by 500. Fire Auto Supplies by 25,000. That was due to repairs from a May 22 motor vehicle accident, what we thought paid for, but it was in May of '22. So that fire truck came back repaired. Fire Uniforms increased by 100. And then we go into Street Department. Street Department has been extremely busy. Their salaries I could reduce by 15,000. The group insurance I could reduce by 20. Had to increase their phones by 700. Their auto by 4,000. The fuel hit us hard here towards the end. Street Projects, the continuation of the sidewalk project down there, and I anticipated what would probably get from the contractor and maybe supplies, so 40,000 there. Street Lights, 4,200, we increased it. Okay, then we go into CAC, Colonial Arts Center. I could reduce the salaries 15,000. The health insurance, 5,000. The utilities up 300. The property insurance up by 500. The supplies up by 500. The capital, there was two line items, the items got paid out of those line items that weren't supposed to be paid out of those line items. So I had to put it back in there, 18,000 for one, 1,600 for another. I talked to the contractor today about what he anticipated would happen for the rest of this month. And he said 29,000, because I know they've got labor in there. So I, I got about 29,000 out of his numbers. Stalker Use Center Group Insurance, I could reduce by 2,500. Stalker Utilities increased 500. Stalker Materials, 500. Stalker Auto up 500. And then the Event Center, this was a new one because the Event Center, we have to pay the utilities and the Adjutant General for people there, and we have the 4,000 in there for that. That equals zero when you do the adds and subtracts as far as the budget. And then you're, what goes to the state is how I've changed those line items. But there's nothing in revenues, and there's no change really in expenditures, just moving those funds around. It was a big one. We won't have another one. We won't have another budget revision.
This meeting is being recorded.
We won't have another one. We will not have another one.
Until the new year, we'll never have one.
I have threatened to take their key fobs, their credit cards, their purchase orders away from them. All of the guys, I get more than anyone purchases.
Oh, I'll, I'll, well, council will bring everything we need to get paid tomorrow, so.
I can tell you the repercussions of that won't just be me.
I was getting emails from the office staff as late as 6:15. They were saying they're working on year-end funding.
Yeah.
Showing what was...
Paying the bills.
It's a stressful time of year for the, for the office, so. Ambie, thank you for all this work and for cleaning all this up for us. Does anybody have any, any questions? I think she went over it very thoroughly, line by line.
I know we approved the revision, second.
And a motion by CJ, a second by Thomas, to approve Resolution 2023-06, General Fund Budget Revision Number 7 for the fiscal year 2022-2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed? Motion carries, it is a resolution, so I'll defer to Mr. Sanders for the roll call.
Mrs. Buckloo?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Rieger?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Ryland?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders votes yes.
So we need everybody's signature there. All right. Thank you, Ambie. Up next, we go back up the agenda to Police Chief Matt Gregory, where we continue to be busy because we continue to have events.
Oh, yes. Just a few things to report on tonight with the barbecue bash upon us. The Police Department will be busy this weekend, providing extra security coverage for the event all throughout the weekend. We also continue to be quite busy planning for Walmsley. We are in the final approach here within the next month of the event occurring. And we continue to have numerous planning meetings where we're meeting on a weekly basis now in preparation for this. Things are coming together really well with all the support that we're getting. And we'll be ready to secure this event. Police Department continues to meet with the County Homeless... Police Department continues to meet with the Upper County Homeless Coalition to discuss solutions to these issues. Just attended a meeting just yesterday. Police Department along with the mayor and the fire department are also engaged in meetings and conversations with our regional governmental partners to discuss solutions regarding the opioid litigation settlement. And along those lines, myself and Lieutenant Lyman will attend a CIT, which stands for Crisis Intervention Team Summit, which will be held in Bridgeport on June 29th, where we'll be engaged in possible solutions regarding mental health crisis. And then finally, work continues on the police department's CLIA accreditation, the other acronym that keeps us very busy. As we approach July, our, you hear me talk about Simmers all the time. Simmers, the qualitative report will be due to the commission. And that will be in advance of our assessment, which will be our second annual web assessment, which is scheduled to begin the first week of August. And so as we progress through that, I'll have more to report on Simmers, as well as the web assessment as we move through August. And Mayor, that's all I have on my questions.
Any questions for Chief Gregory?
How's it working out having a full force?
Tremendous, tremendous. Yeah, almost to the point I kind of have to pinch myself because it's the first time in six years. So we're able to be much more proactive. Hopefully, you know, I've received some feedback and we discussed that we were going to be more proactive with the foot patrols and our focus especially on downtown issues. So we've been responsive to that. We'll continue to be responsive to that. And having that full force certainly allows us to do that much better.
Well, I've heard nothing but positive comments so far from our new hires. And I've heard, I've received several messages from business owners downtown that appreciate walking up and down the street. That's been noticed and that's been, that's been gone over very well. So we need to keep that up and appreciate the efforts.
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you, man.
Keep it up.
Be safe. All right, so Attorney Tom O'Neil has the report.
I'll be brief since I'm the last to go. I'll just kind of update you on some things that are going on. Our zoning appeal lawsuit, received a call from Judge Rieger's office. Our first hearing of that is going to be July 31st. Valley Green, I've had another conversation with them. They just acknowledged that the ball is in their court on trying to find kind of next steps on developing their system. But we just thought it was important to make sure that we are continuing to have regular communications with them. So we don't slip into, you know, the opposite, where we're not talking. We'll see what they come back with as far as a proposal to upgrade their system and, and, you know, take care of the, the issues out there. There's a chance that another area system might be interested in taking over that system. And we'd certainly be called upon, I think, to facilitate or at least weigh in on, on that if, if that were to happen. Progress continues on the Wesleyan Property Exchange closing. I still need to be put in touch with a college contact down there at Counterpart to kind of work on their side. Or just at least to coordinate closing, whoever is going to represent them.
Have you reached out to President?
I haven't. I wasn't, I was. So, no, I have not.
I'll call him in the morning. I'll, I'll make a note to call him in the morning.
Thank you. And be prepared that probably then the first or second meeting in August, with there not being a second meeting in July, probably a first or second meeting in August, I'll have prepared for council and consider vacating the various, the couple of alleys that are part of that exchange, referenced in the ordinance and part of the memorandum of understanding. So that will be coming down the pike soon. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neil? All right, thank you, sir. As we get down to correspondence and information, before we get to that, you all have in your mailboxes some information that is relative to some property matters that I need to ask for a brief executive session on that we received yesterday. And since we don't have a meeting until the couple of days into July, I'd really like to talk to you about it this evening. So there'll be no decisions made, just to start, just to look at some information we received today relative to property matters. So if you could just give me a few minutes after the meeting, I'd appreciate that. Okay. Correspondence and information, notification, city council meeting date change, or, well, it's actually, we're not having a meeting. It's not changing. So Thursday, July 20th, that meeting has been canceled due to the Wamsby event taking place that week. So please make note of that. But note that if we do have something that arises that is of immediate timeframe, we can have a meeting. And also to your point last time, actually municipal league is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Yeah, so it's usually Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So we, we are not needing to change a meeting in, in August, so. D2 Plantagen Brothers, DBA Jimbo's Place, we know that we're getting another new business downtown, so we're excited about that. Jimbo's Place is going into the former Evolution Bar location. They, they worked on it. I saw that they painted it white today. So that's looking nice. That is a zoning form to the ABCA for that establishment. Also under the ABCA, we have a floor plan modification or extension, I should say, by Buffalo Wild Wings for June through October 1st. They like to have some cornhole out there in those first few parking spaces in that lot. They do that usually every summer. Also Foster's Marketing Group, we have a letter to the ABCA regarding the special event. Events, almost having barbecue bash license application for their beer garden on private property in, off of Trader's Alley. We have a FOIA request from Shaw Bukowski for police records, report of the cat and dog activity from the county commission for April 2023. Kathy's here. Hello, nice to see you. The Gibson Library's director's report for June 2023 is in the packet. Mitigation plan, public survey. If you would please, we, we need some survey results on, on this. This, we can have this link emailed to you, but right there it is. This is relative to our floodplain study. So please fill that out or if you, if you have some time. But Teresa, we can email that to you if you haven't already received it. Opioid litigation settlement documents from Kroger, about Kroger. And then we have the recommendation from the Revenue Committee regarding funding request of the Upstate County Senior Center. And that has been tabled, or we recommended that it be tabled. We do think that there's going to be some, some changes made from the governor's side of things that are going to correct this situation. So we're, we're kind of in a hold pattern to see where things are. Their fiscal year actually doesn't begin until October, so we have some time. So we're, we're just going to kind of wait and see what, what happens there. But if we need to come back to the table, we can. Just wanted to give you all an update there. And I did, and I did talk to someone with the governor's office who said, you might just want to wait on this because, you know, there could, there could be a solution worked out. So we'll wait and see about that. Under the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes from 6:516 and 6:01. We have the approval of payment, or approval payment of bills and then the approval of our building and wiring permits. I entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Jack, is there a second? Rylance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay. We have dispensed with all of our strategic issues for discussion and or vote. We are down to council comments and announcements. We will begin on the left with Mrs. Buckle.
Hey, I've heard nothing but really good comments on our new fence down by Stalker. I love it. That's great. Can't wait to get the old building down over there, get that all cleaned up. I'm thrilled to see the sidewalk on Florida Street down there at the corner being done. That's been neat for a long time. And I just want everybody to come and support the barbecue bash and hopefully everything's successful and it'll be back next year.
Thank you, Pam. David.
Things are looking great down at the Public Safety Complex. Jerry, I had a question I meant to ask you and it got away from me. Are we still doing the period lighting in the middle of the lot?
Not in the middle. They, they elected, and by day, I'm sorry. They, the police and fire department elected that they're better served with that lot being open, particularly testing hoes, that kind of thing with their apparatus. So the bays in the center are deleted, but there will be period lighting. We've laid the conduit. There will be period lighting around the perimeter. And then if you notice, the, we'll dress that light pole in the center up. But if you notice, we put four new real bright LEDs on that. When we have a fence down there, they can turn those on and off so that we can plug that lot with light whenever there's a fence in.
Are, to that point though, are we changing out the big lights in the, in, are we, are we turning the, like, the, 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 the food land style light into a historical light or are those being left alone?
We're going to paint the pole black.
Okay, all right. Sorry, David.
They have, like I said, if you notice, they have brand new LED light heads on that pole.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just a couple of other follow-up things, things we've been talking about. Congratulations again to Randy Sanders, the Miss West Virginia Pageant brought a lot of people to Buchanan. And I hope, even though you might be stepping back from it, maybe we can get a lifelong commitment to continue to host that in Buchanan. I'm curious about CJ's point from last meeting on, are we doing anything, reaching out on the rails to trail stuff as far as getting down, as far as to LV, Sheriff Pickens? I mean, who's, who's heading that up?
There was a discussion at Create today. How about CJ?
Briefly, there was a conference call last, this past Monday that I was unable to be on with Kent Spellman and another individual that represents these nonprofit rail to trail conservatories or whatnot. And there's another one planned that I'll, the, the mayor and myself have been asking to get on. So people are aware of it. There's been, you know, work being done. And I think it's an opportunity. We just have to, it's very, there's, a lot of these entities are extremely difficult to find out who, who they are and how do you contact them, railroads being the most difficult, so. But we're working on it.
The only other thing I would add, I had the, hadn't been to Sutton in a while. And I was, I've been on a mission to try to find Gray Barker's gravesite in Braxton County. So I was in downtown Sutton, went to the Bigfoot Museum. And they said, you need to talk to the people at the other museum, which is the Braxton County Monster one. Fellow by the name of Andrew is also the head of their CVB. They kind of combined the museum with their CVB. There were people in there buying Gray Barker sweatshirts left and right. And I said, I don't suppose you could tell me where he's buried? He said, I can't, but I've got a guy that can. He pulled him up on the sun, guy gave me directions. And about 45 minutes later, after a laborious search on private property with a pack of wolves and a dog that looked more like a bear and several feral geese that were chasing me down this. I've got photos, anybody that wants to see them. I was, I posed for pictures right beside the great Gray Barker's grave, so. I, I guess, the next day I called the guy, it was a Saturday, when I called him back and I figured, oh geez, they're not going to, they answered immediately. And I said, this is tremendous that you guys are open on weekends. Oh yeah, we're open every weekend. That's our biggest days and the whole bit, so. I don't know, maybe we could talk to Lacy and come up with a plan yet to get some staffing in our own place on weekends. They sell Gray Barker sweatshirts and little doll-like figures from the green Braxton County Monster. Just wanted to share that recounting. It was a positive experience in one of our sister cities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right. Jack.
Well, looking forward to the barbecue bash. And of course, as always, Chief, you, you do a stellar job and we're blessed to have you here in the city. Jerry, don't know what to say. Your crew's just, things are looking good. You guys are working hard. And, and all the city workers do a great job. Ambie, thank you for the, all the work you put in on the budget. We appreciate that. Randy, congratulations on your one retirement.
Thank you.
You've done very well with that and been very successful. And you brought notoriety to Buchanan with Miss West Virginia and Miss USA things, so congratulations.
Ambie, the class of '76 up here is like kind of retired, but, but, you know, we're, you know, you're, you're still the all ball out here, so.
Never give in.
Anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Happy birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. That's right. Me and, me and Jack here are June 16th buddies, so. They're like twins. That's right.
I'm Arnold.
Reverend, Reverend, right? All right, Dave Thomas.
Just like what everybody else said, have a great weekend, be safe and enjoy the barbecue bash.
That's it? Thanks, thanks, Jay David Thomas. CJ.
We have completed the two additional turnstiles for the historic short stories. So there's eight stories that we need to format. And we have stories and images that are on the other posts, you know, that are up eight, nine feet here. We need to reformat them, so I can get them to you next week. And then someone's going to have to take hold of getting these stories formatted. So look forward to getting them in, more, you know, tell, be authentic, tell our story and represent value. And just keep at it. And things are looking great. And a lot of everyone that comes to town says, I don't know what, it just feels like something's going on, you know? And that's, that's the goal. So let's just get out of the way of success and keep things moving.
Thank you, CJ. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the comments from some of my fellow council members concerning the Miss West Virginia USA and Miss West Virginia Teen USA Pageant. We did have a very successful event, just about sold out the theater, sold out all hotel rooms in the area. And have a great young woman from Charleston, who was the vice president of the student body at Marston University and on a path of great success, winning the USA Pageant. Teen USA was won by a young lady from Parkersburg, Lake and Campbell, Navea, Harmon is the USA winner. And I didn't realize until her mother pointed out, her name backwards is Heaven. So, you know, it was really a sweet comment there. And looking forward to work with them. My, my duties will continue with that until the USA Pageant. And then yes, I will be officially retired from the pageant business, which has been very good to me over the years. Want to congratulate the committee on the barbecue bash. It's coming together very nicely. I see down the jawbone and a different area will be affected. I'm looking forward to a very successful weekend with it. And then of course, about a month from now, we'll pull off Wamsby 2023. So we'll save more on that for our next gathering and give you a great update at that point. So again, congratulations to the barbecue bash. It's going to be a great event this weekend.
Thanks, Randy. I certainly echo what colleagues on council have shared. Being there with you at the pageant this, that weekend, you did a tremendous job. And I don't, I don't know that we've, that we all realized how much that brings to the local economy here. I mean, that, the PAC was full for, for, for two days. And the Opera House was full on Saturday night. And restaurants were full on the other times and hotels were full. And so it's a, it's a nice event. And so I appreciate you bringing that to us for the past, the past several years. And, you know, certainly we hope that your, your predecessor will, your successor, I should say, will, will, will keep it in Buchanan. I think it's a great venue. So thank you for, thank you for everything that you've done with that. And thank you for everything that you're doing with Wamsby. You know, we, we are down to the wire and, you know, as of Saturday, we will be within 30 days of the event. So we, I encourage all of our folks of our community, if you can lend a hand, please do. We're, we're going to need it. This is, this is going to be a, a, a big event for our community and one that we've been anticipating for quite some time. So thank you for bringing that to us and all the, all of your leadership with that, with that event. In fact, while we're on the thanking, I appreciate all the work that council is, is doing. Everyone's bringing to the table a lot of knowledge and a lot of effort, a lot of heart for our community. So thank you for what you do for, for our, our city. You know, we are, we're immensely blessed here to have, to have so many good things in Buchanan and good people. in Buchanan and good people to share them with, so thank you for, for what everyone, everyone does. As Pam mentioned, the barbecue bash this weekend, looking forward to that. Buchanan's going to smell pretty good tomorrow and Saturday, so come on down, and I think there was a band this evening to kick it off a little bit, the vendors are open, so I might go down and have lunch, might have my birthday lunch down there tomorrow at the, at the, what's at the vendors, it's like Strawberry Festival over again. Three times we're going to have vendor food this year in Buchanan, so. Ambi mentioned, our Fourth of July fireworks are scheduled for the thirtieth in conjunction with Festival Fridays, so please mark your calendars, I've been getting a lot of texts and, and, and messages asking when those are, that is on June thirtieth, Friday night, so we're looking forward to a great fireworks show again, same location as we always do them, which will be in the, in back of the former Citizens Bank property, now, now Community Care, so bring your lawn chairs down, come to Festival Fridays, enjoy some music and, and watch fireworks in our, in our city. So I hope everybody enjoys the weekend, happy Father's Day to all the fathers on council and in our community, and also enjoy West Virginia Day. We are, we're fortunate to live in this great state, so take, take some time to have a pepperoni roll and, and enjoy the, the beauty of, of the mountain state on, on Tuesday. With that, I'd like to ask that we adjourn into a brief executive session at eight-thirty-six. All right, thanks, everybody, have a great weekend.